Administrative matter. I noted today that I don't think we've turned in the annual report for last year. And I do have a copy of it here at home. Jessica has been very kind to take the lead in doing it this year. And once Jessica and I figure out who has the latest copy, we will make sure that it gets delivered to Town Hall, to you, Eileen, and then you'll turn it in to whoever you need to turn it in to.
Joe, can I interrupt for one second? I think that I just, it's been so long, but I thought that we had decided, I revised it per what we discussed. And I thought that we were going to run it by all board members before we submitted it for, you know, for good. I think that's kind of where we left off a few months ago.
Okay, I think it'll be-
I don't know if you still want to do that, but-
I think it's really, be really hard to do that. So why don't you and I talk tomorrow, we'll see who has the most recent draft. And I would guess that the members would have, would have something better to do than to read the annual report from last year.
Okay.
We are going to, there's one other thing that I wanted to talk about from an administrative point of view. That's not on the agenda, but it's just an administrative point of view. We all know that our attorney, Gail Fraser, is resigning at the end of this year.
Retiring, retiring.
Retiring and resigning from this board position. She's retiring and resigning. Okay, so we need a new attorney. And there's been a lot of talk about what we're going to do to find one. I did speak at some length to a former chair of the planning board who told me what they did when our last planning board attorney was replaced. And what they did, I don't think we need to do. He actually caused a notice to be published. And I'm told that a very large number of resumes was received. He read them all. He reviewed them and concluded that there were really three finalists. And he appointed a subcommittee. And I was one of the members of that subcommittee to interview the last three people on that list. And Ed Buzyk was one of the three. And he was selected. And he is currently the planning board attorney in Milburn. But as Gail refreshed my memory today, that's not, that's, that whole rigmarole is not required for the appointment of an attorney for one year. And it's only a one-year position. It has historically been renewed every year by the current occupant, except in the case of Ed Buzyk, who actually took the place of a sitting attorney for the planning board. But after discussing the matter with Gail, we concluded that rather than get a whole flock of resumes and have to sit and wind them down, that Eileen, Gail, and I, and anybody else on the board who has an idea for an attorney, someone who is familiar with New Jersey land use practice, and hopefully with variances, both C variances and D variances. What we thought we would do would be to gather the names together. And then I will appoint a committee of three. I will be one, Jessica will be another, and then I'll appoint a third person. We'll review the final two or three or four resumes that look like they're really hopeful. And then we will interview those three or four people and come up with a suggestion, which we will then bring to the entire board for ratification. Okay. Now I think that we should turn to the agenda. And since I'm having some trouble pulling it up on my-
I have it, Joe.
Phone, you've got it, right?
I have it right here.
Yeah, so the next matter is-
Approval of minutes.
All right, so we've all received the minutes of the last meeting. And there were some changes made. I saw the strikeouts in the very last set that went around. That was the meeting of March 2, was it?
Fourth second.
Yeah.
Correct. And then I did get some other corrections from Mary McNatt, which I'll read to you. There were just a few. On page eight, line 339, we changed, instead of the applicant is, we changed it to the applicants are, plural. On page nine, line 387, was revised to reflect the adjoining lot and now would like to demolish the existing house. Page 10, line 407, was revised to read, "Other members felt that merging the lots and constructing an addition created a dwelling that is out of scale and character to the neighborhood." And line 438, the setback in line with the existing setback. Line, page 11, line 491, remove RuPaul and Burlap, the hydro plants, and replant them after, replant them in the same location after completion of the construction. Page 12, line 496, would necessitate a new application before the zoning board. And I believe, I'm sure, that is all.
Okay. Now I'm going to once again caution you. If you were not at the meeting of March 2, please do not participate in the adoption of these minutes in any way. For those people who were at the meeting of March 2, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Mary, you've made a motion. Is there a second? Are you, Craig, are you scratching your ear, or are you making a second?
That's a good, second, second, I was on mute.
Second from Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are adopted. The next matter on the agenda, Eileen?
The next matter on the agenda is, are the resolutions. The first one is calendar 3731-19, Justin and Allison Green at 8 Wordsburg.
All right, now, do you have with you the list of people who are eligible or no?
Yes, I have the voting sheets.
Can you indicate who's eligible on this one?
Eligible voters are Mary McNatt, Craig Plutner, Jody Sharma, Jessica Glad, Joe Steinberg, Wolfgang Taurus.
All right, is there a motion to adopt this memorializing resolution?
Motion to adopt calendar 3731.
I'll second.
Second for Mary. Want to call the roll on this?
Mary McNatt?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joe Steinberg?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
The next one?
The next one is, 3734, Sudeshna and Vivek Kapoor, 51 Elmwood Place in Short Hills. Eligible voting members are Mary McNatt, Craig Plutner, Jody Sharma, Jessica Glad, Joseph Steinberg, and Kevin. But I don't see Kevin, so I'm not sure he can really-
Kevin is here, but he's muted.
He's muted and I don't see him, so I don't know.
His name is listed, but he's muted. Can somebody unmute him?
We can't, he's muted on his end.
Okay.
Didn't let us.
Okay, so-
Is it star, is it round nine?
Kevin can't participate in this one. Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Kevin's here.
I've had internet connection problems this evening, my apologies.
Not a problem.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yes.
That's fine.
You're probably better off, Joe.
Did I hear a motion?
I'm moving, I'll move it.
Jessica.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
I move approval of calendar 3734.
I got, I got Jessica has the motion and Mary, I think you would second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mary McNatt?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Kevin Wenzel?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Next one?
Next one is Giuseppe and Antonina Martino, 264 Main Street. Everyone, Mary, Craig, Jody, Steve, Jessica, Joe, Wolfgang are eligible.
Is there a motion on this one?
Motion to adopt calendar 373719.
Is there a second?
Jody.
Jody, second.
Mary McNatt?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The next one?
Next one is Kathula Bodapudi at 87 Great Hills Road. Eligible are Mary McNatt, Craig Plutner, Jody Sharma, Jessica Glad, and Wolfgang Taurus.
Is there a motion?
I move approval. Calendar 34, 374020.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Mary McNatt?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
And the last one is Daniel Mayo, 17 Fackeray Drive. Eligible are Mary McNatt, Craig Plutner, Jody Sharma, Steve Togar, Jessica Glad, Joseph Steinberg, Wolfgang Taurus.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll move approval of calendar 3741-20.
Second?
Mary McNatt?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, the next matter on the agenda?
The next matter on the agenda is the retaining Jay Troutman as a traffic expert.
Okay, let me, let me comment on this for a minute. I spoke to Jay Troutman at some length. Because the thought had occurred to me that traffic is not today what it was when the applicant's traffic engineer did his study back in November and issued the study in January. So I called Jay Troutman to find out from him what his take was on going forward at this point with a traffic engineer. And much to my surprise, he indicated that he thought he could do a first-rate job for the board and do, and do it without, even in this time of low, relatively low traffic generation. And despite the fact that next door, at the Milburn Mall, which I visited on Thursday, on Saturday, to find out that most of the businesses were actually open, but I actually went in to the largest store in that location, the computer store, and found it almost entirely empty. But he said that he has a sufficient number of techniques that can be used to produce a, what he thought would be a good, very good report for the board. He said the one thing that he would not really be able to do, he said that with most of his cases, what he does is that he physically visits the premises just by driving there and driving around to see exactly what it looks like, what the traffic generation is. But basically, he said he uses the information that was generated with actual traffic counts by the applicant's traffic engineer to create what he thought would be a very useful report for the, for the board. And he said he didn't really feel that we had to put off retaining a traffic engineer to represent the board for another time, which I say, kind of surprised me. But he seemed very confident in, in that. I also, and this is a little bit off the beaten track, but I've discussed both with Gail today and with Eileen, having a report issued. You may recall that there were two reports issued by our municipal engineer. We have had no report from our municipal planner on this whole application. And I think this is an important enough one so that, that we should, so that we should take a vote. And I'm now getting off the track a little bit on the traffic engineer, which I'll come back to. But I would not feel comfortable taking a vote on this case without a thorough report from our municipal planner. And I am told, both by Eileen and by Gail, that if we were to ask for a report from our planner, which would obviously take him a fair amount of time. He's going to have to review everything that's been put into evidence so far and as well as the traffic report that we're going to get if we decide today to get a traffic report, that his bill would be submitted not to the municipality, but to the applicant. So I think it would be appropriate. Now, I should point out to you, since I sit on the planning board, that in this municipality, the planner attends every meeting of the planning board and submits reports on all the applications that the planning board looks at, all the important ones anyway. But in our town, we don't have the planner sit in the zoning board meetings on a regular basis, nor does he submit a report on a regular basis. I think this one, and I'm happy to hear your thoughts on this, is important enough so that we should have a planner's report. Remember that in every case, both variances, certainly every case in which variances are requested. And here, there are something like seven C variances that are requested and at least two, I think two D variances, which require, as you all know, five affirmative votes. I think that this is an important enough case, and there's been enough interest in it so that it would be useful for us to have a report of the planner. Are there any thoughts about that from anybody?
Well, let me just back up one minute because you said the planner, our planner, would submit his bill to the applicant. The planner submits the bill-
I'm sorry.
To the town, but it gets paid by the applicant, out of the applicant's escrow account.
I'm sorry, if I, if I misspoke, you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
The report comes to us. Of course, a copy of it would be made available to both the applicant and the objector.
Of course.
Anybody have any views as to whether or not, in this case, we should get a planner's report?
I agree that we should get the planner's report because of the location and the history and the opinions of the residents.
Anybody else?
No, this is Kevin, I agree, I agree as well.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion then. Mary, do you, is that, is that a motion that I've heard?
Yes, you did, you heard my motion to engage the planner.
Is there a second?
Kevin seconds.
Joy, you seconded. All right, you want to call, roll call on this, Eileen? Can't hear you now.
Voice vote is sufficient.
Okay, just a voice vote?
A voice vote is adequate.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we have a request now. And Eileen, you will please get a letter off to the, to whoever you have to, so that we can get a good report from our planner. Okay.
I'm sorry, Joe, just to-
Back to McDonald's, yes.
And just a reminder that I've been recusing myself on that matter.
Yes, I understand.
All right, so you're, yeah.
Okay.
That vote, Eileen, on retaining the planner? That kept, that will- Obstained on everything involving this application.
Okay, now back to the traffic engineer. We have spoken, as you guys, I think, know, to three, I think, two other traffic engineers. They both pulled out on us because of conflict of interest or purported conflicts of interest. But if they didn't feel comfortable being retained, that's good enough for me. This firm has no conflict. And I would like to suggest that someone might make a motion to retain the McDonough firm.
I have a question first.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the fact that he's not going to do any counts on his own?
I, I think so. It didn't, it didn't sound to me, and I don't, I'm sorry that he's not here to speak for himself, but it didn't sound to me as if he, as a planner, as a expert for the board, would have done our counts, traffic counts anyway, even if the traffic had been the same now as it was when the, when he heard who the traffic engineer was. And we all know that that's a very, very well-known firm, has been for many, many years. I, I'm comfortable that he could, he said he's got plenty of tools in his tool chest to do a excellent report for the board. So I'm comfortable with it, yes, Joy.
Is that typical for an engineer to use another engineer's data?
Counts?
Yes, is that typical?
I can't speak to whether it's typical because there are not that many cases that I'm aware of where traffic engineers have been retained, both for a party and for the board. But maybe, Gail, maybe you know?
Well, I think they're all going to use the trip generation reports out of the ITE. So they're, he's going to look at what the applicant's expert put together. And I don't think we're going to be hearing this case in the near future. So I think if the board were to get the traffic report and we start hearing traffic testimony and the board wants him to go out there and do traffic counts, by the time we hear this case, you know, I suspect traffic may have picked up somewhat. So we can always ask him to do that. If, I think he can certainly go visit the property. There's nothing to stop him to go visit the property and see where it is and what's it like.
I asked him specifically if he was familiar with the site, and he said yes. You know, Gail has raised another issue, which I think is appropriate in light of this discussion, to put on the table. My first thought, and I spoke to Jessica Glad about this over the weekend, my first thought was just, let's just put off the work that the traffic engineer was going to do until we're back to quote, "normal," end of quote, whatever that is. And I think, Steve, you said, before this meeting started, that you didn't realize how comfortable you would be working from home. I think that if I read the articles in the New York Times appropriately, a lot of employers are going to be needing much less space in office buildings, especially in New York City, because they're going to realize that they can get good work from their folks working at home. But my first thought was, let's just put this whole thing off. Until I spoke to him and was pretty convinced that he could do a good job, notwithstanding the fact that he was relying on the actual traffic counts that were done by the other experts. But I, then, Gail and I had a conversation. I've had a number of conversations with a number of people over the last two or three days. And it became very obvious to me that, a number of things became obvious to me. One, and Eileen was very clear on her view of this today, that there's been enough interest shown in this particular case, New Jersey Energy, so that it would probably not be appropriate to continue that case in this remote format. Which is one of the reasons, my unhappiness with this whole remote business, is one of the reasons that this particular agenda tonight is limited to administrative matters. But getting back to the NJ Energy case, and there's nothing that I'm going to say now that is, you know, requires that the applicant or the applicant's attorney be here. But Gail spoke to the attorney today and, at my suggestion, asked him for a voluntary extension of time. We have one, but it runs out. It runs out at the end of this month. Meaning, excuse me, meaning June. And even for, assuming that we get a vote tonight to retain the traffic engineer, he's going to need the next X number of weeks to prepare his report. It then has to be turned over, not only to all of you, but also to the applicant. And clearly, as Gail just said, we're not going to finish this case by the end of June 2020, that's for sure. So what has happened, Gail advised me later today, was that the applicant's attorney apparently is going to discuss this matter with his client and get back to Gail with the view, a view as to whether or not they're going to consent to a extension till the fall. If they don't, we have another whole issue on our hands. And we will then have to have a meeting on the 16th- a meeting on the 16th of this month, and we will rely on our counsel to advise us as to the alternatives that we have on the 16th if we don't get an extension of time. So we will be voting tonight to retain a traffic engineer, but you guys really have to understand that there's no way that he's going to be able to create a report, get it circulated to all of us and to the other side, I mean, to the applicant, not the other side, to the applicant and to the objector's attorney by, in time for that to be handled appropriately on the 16th. And by the way, I agree with, with Eileen David, that this case is complicated enough, has enough history behind it, and enough has already been put on the record, that it would be probably inappropriate for us to handle this case, even if by some miracle, this traffic report could be finished in time to be circulated to everybody and absorbed by everybody by the 16th. I think it would be inappropriate for this case to be handled in a remote fashion. But having said all of that, the issue before us tonight is, and it's been put on the agenda, so it's there for everybody to see, whether or not we should have an independent traffic engineer representing the board doing a report to us. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
I think there's no doubt about it.
You feel the same way about that as you did about
About the planner.
About the planner, okay. Anybody else have a thought? Steve?
I'm in favor.
Anyone else?
I'm also in favor.
All right, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to retain the McDonough firm as our traffic engineer?
Motion to retain McDonough for traffic engineer.
Craig made the motion. Is there a second?
Is he the same, is this the Troutman person?
It's Troutman, he's one of the principals.
Just, just checking.
Yep, that's who it is.
Okay. Are you the second, Mary? Jody, you're the second?
Yeah, I have Jody. Go ahead.
Can we do, Gail, a
Just a voice vote is fine.
Voice vote here. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Wolfgang has abstained.
And Wolfgang has abstained. Is there a negative vote? Anybody? Vote nay. I hear none. It's unanimous. Eileen, with you. He told me today on the phone, as I think I mentioned to you, that he had not seen our engineers' reports. But would you, would you transmit the entire file to him, including those reports? Thank you. Is there anything else on the agenda for tonight?
Just anybody who might have any non-agenda items that they want to
Anybody want to talk about anything?
Raise their hand.
Does anybody think they're going to have a problem with remote public hearings to the extent we can go forward on some of those pending cases?
I'm really not in favor of remote public hearings because people can't see the drawings. They can't see the same things we do. But I don't know when Town Hall might be opening up. I don't know. Eileen, do you have an idea?
I did sit in on one remote hearing of the planning board, and we were able to see the exhibits, or they were able to be photographed in such a way. And the engineer in that case was able to draw a line showing exactly where he wanted everybody to look. It's not the best way to do it, that's for sure. But I'm, what I'm suggesting, and I think what Gail was suggesting, is that some of the cases, some of the cases in our backlog, and we, we have, we don't have a tremendous backlog, as you know, because, Eileen, was that chart that you did sent everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so you were all able to see the chart. And we don't have like 20 cases backed up. I think there are a total of eight. I think there are eight all, I think there are eight altogether, including NJ Energy, New Jersey Energy. So some of them are fairly simple cases that don't require a tremendous amount of sophistication and studying of the plans.
So I have a question.
You will all, you will all have your own set of plans. So you'll have size sets, you'll be able to review them. Eileen is going to have professionals, where there are professionals, provide digital copies so that they can be uploaded to the township's website, so that if there's members of the public, they can access them through the website. And if there are members of the public who do not have access to a computer, clearly they can't go to a library right now, so they can't access the website through a library computer, they can contact Eileen, and if necessary, a copy will be mailed to them either by the applicant's professionals, or they can pick a copy up at the Town Hall. It's not ideal, but we have to move forward because the legislation that we all worked on to try and get by us some additional time is still sitting on the governor's desk.
So how, how would the public ask questions?
What will happen is
Go ahead.
Just like we, just like, the way it's set up is that me and Nicole are both the co-hosts of this, and what happens is as you sign in, you come in as an attendee. And so as an attendee, if they have a question, we will run it just like a regular meeting if, when we get to the question part, is there anyone from the public who has a question? They would be able to raise their hand as an attendee. We would bring them over to ask their question. And, you know, very much like our regular session, if there's any drawings, the professionals for that particular applicant will have the opportunity, they would be able to share them on the screen so that everyone can see them on the screen if they haven't had a chance to look at them. So it runs pretty, it ran fairly well at the planning board, I thought, you know.
Mary, I don't know if you've done any of these Zoom meetings other than this one, but
I've done a lot of Zoom meetings.
Okay, so you know how at the bottom of the page, it says participants?
Right, yes.
And if you click on that, you can see a list of the participants on the right-hand side of the page. So if you look at that, below everyone's name, it says invite, mute me, and raise hands. So if somebody, even part of this group, wanted to ask a question, rather than all of us talking at once, we can each raise our hand, like I'm raising my hand right now. And so everyone should be able to see that I have my hand raised, which means I have a question to ask. That's exactly what the public will also be able to do. And then Eileen would be able to bring them over from the attendee board to the participant board so that they can ask their question and get an answer.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Now, people that call in on a landline, you know, I'm not sure how we handle that, Eileen. There's a pound sign that, a pound that they have to
I think it's pound eight that they, it raises their hand. It lets us know that there's a, their number appears as a participant. So then we would be able to see that there's someone who's calling in, not, doesn't have video, but is calling in with a question, so we'd be able to take that question.
All right, I have a question. I'm looking at, I just went to the bottom of the page, and I'm seeing that there are 13 participants listed, or it says 13 participants.
Right.
And I, looking at the pictures here, I see 12. Who's the 13?
One is an attendee.
Remember, that's the attendee, Michael.
Michael.
Was just a member of the public.
He's just listening.
Okay. So I think
When you go to the bottom of the page right now, Joe, click on the word participants. Click on that.
Okay.
Now, doesn't a little column turn up on the right side?
Yes.
In white? And you can see it says panelists, there are 12 of us. That's If you click on where it says attendees
You'll see.
It turns blue, and you'll see Michael, who is the person who has a hearing on the agenda two weeks from now, that he is just visiting to see how the process works.
Okay.
So you can leave that little chart up the whole time and still see all of the board members' little Brady Bunch boxes.
Yes, and now I see your hand, Joe.
Right, so I can raise my hand, and you can see my hand is raised. So it's going to take us all a while to get used to this, but unfortunately, I think at least until
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to get back to the municipal building, and we won't have to get accustomed to it for too long, hopefully. But who knows? Okay. I guess this is the time for me to ask if there are any members of the public who have something to say about tonight's meeting. And I hear none and see none. I'm clicking on attendee.
Right, no questions.
And there doesn't seem to be any question. Okay. Is there a motion? Have we, we voted on the
We did everything.
On everything that we needed to vote on tonight. Are there any of you who would be particularly interested in serving with Jessica and me on a committee to interview the finalists of the attorneys, assuming that we have enough people who are interested so that we end up with more than one finalist? Anybody who's
I would if no one else is.
Well, Mary and Wolfgang are the two who have indicated that they have an interest in being on that subcommittee. That doesn't mean either of you will be selected. I will make a decision when the time comes, but
You can only have three because otherwise it would be a quorum of the board.
Yes, we can't have more than three. And Gail, on behalf of the board, I'm going to ask you one more time, one more year?
No, no, Joe. I'm sorry.
I tried.
I'll be here through December.
Okay.
Whoever you hire gets everything they need.
But I want you all to know that I tried.
He's tried several times, every couple of weeks he tries.
Every couple of weeks, but it doesn't do any good. Okay.
But I appreciate it, and
You're quite welcome. We appreciate the work that you've done for the board.
I am, I am doing for Milburn what I'm doing for my other town as I go through everything. I keep gathering all the resolutions and anything that's critical, so I will be able to put everything on a flash drive and give it to whoever your new attorney is, so you don't have to have somebody reinvent the wheel. If you're comfortable with the format of the resolutions as they are right now, I'll make sure they understand that, and hopefully it won't be too much of a
Now, Joy, I have a question for you, again administratively. You're back from Italy in one piece, thank God. Are you willing to go back on the subcommittee with Mary?
Yeah.
Good, to work on the resolutions with our attorney. That's terrific. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night, all.